I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'm gonna start this meeting with a public hearing. We have proposed some new fees, new permit fees, and so I'll just go over them. So residential multifamily, the new would be $100 plus 15 cents per square foot. Alterations would be $50 plus 15 cents per square foot. Repairs, $50 plus 15 cents per square foot. So that's the permit fees for that. Commercial, the new would be $150 plus 20 cents per square foot. For alterations, it would be $75 plus 20 cents per square foot. And repairs would be $75 plus 20 cents per square foot. Industrial, new construction would be $300 plus 20 cents per square foot. Alterations, $100 plus 20 cents per square foot. Repairs, $100 plus 20 cents per square foot. Swimming pool and driveway permit, there'd be no changes. Electric, plumbing, and heating. So for a one or two-family residential, a new building would be $125 per unit. Residential addition, alteration, or repair, $50. Commercial multifamily, $50 for up to $2,000, $80 for $2,001 to $4,000, and $100 for over So those are the costs of the electric or the plumbing and the heating. A demolition permit, residential, for one and two-family, would be $100. Residential accessory structure would be $50. Commercial primary structure would be $200. Commercial accessory structure, $100. Industrial, $200. Assigned permit, residential, $40; commercial, $60; industrial, $85. Cell tower permit would be $250. And general information, applications, review fee, that's the base fee. Permit fee is the added square foot rate. Fine for starting work without permit, double the review and permit fee. And expiration of permits, we had one year, but I think it's supposed to be 18 months. So we need to change.
But you also need to, we also need to look at the fine.
The fine, okay.
Because in one place, there were a couple of places where it's different. So that the permit itself needs to be changed.
Okay.
And the wording in the, in the rule, in the regulations itself have to be changed.
Okay, so we need to go back and look at those.
Is this a, is the fine a fee? If it's a fee, we're allowed to change it. If it's part of the regulation, it can only be done at the.
Oh, okay.
Well, you're right.
Yes.
All right, so let's, let's table that thing for now until we explore that a little bit more.
Good point, Eli.
Yeah, thank you. And change the expiration of permits to 18 months?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So now I will open it up to the public for comments, questions. Yes, could you state your name, please?
I'm Charlie Bozzello.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a significant increase.
Yes.
I'd like to hear what the rationale is, why this increase is necessary, and when it goes into effect.
How do you spell your last name?
B as in Bozzello.
I think you might want to refer to the planning board. A study was undertaken by the planning board some, some time back, at the suggestion of our building inspector code enforcement officer, because apparently our fees are way out of line with a lot of other towns, and they hadn't been changed in years. So we decided to take a look at them. We got some suggestions from our building inspector. In some cases, we went with it; in some cases, we modified it. But I think in general, it's because the fees had not been changed in years, and they were significantly lower than other towns.
About 2007, was it?
Yeah, 2007. So I, you know, I know it's an increase, but.
That's right, it was 2007.
Is there a financial driver for this?
The fees need to cover all of the, the costs of, of our building inspector. And I don't think we've been doing a good enough job at paying his salary through these fees. So we needed to increase them for that reason.
Maybe, Martine, maybe you could give a little insight as far as the planning board, how we came to, how long it took us to come to this?
We did, it was probably a couple of years ago, we looked at the fees, and we had received the recommendations from the building inspector. Eventually, we did not reach any conclusion as far as changing or not changing. Then, in the meantime, the wording in the building regulations was amended by the voters of the town. And that is, the building regulations document is what sets the fees. The change in the language that was approved by the voters gave the Board of Selectment the power to change the fee section, or the permit section, of the ordinance. The rest of the language would be amended only by the voters, which is the situation with the expiration date.
Yeah.
So we really didn't reach any conclusion. We did meet with the planning board a little while ago, and just showed the comparison between what we had and what the building inspector was proposing. And I, I had also looked at some of the fees from some of the surrounding towns. I didn't bring that tonight, unfortunately.
Right, right.
But then, we just, I just presented the information, and then we had the discussion.
Right, thank you, Martine. In terms of when they go into effect, as soon as they're approved, I would think, Charlie, yes?
Uh, no.
No?
The first week in May.
First week in May, okay.
Yeah, the building inspector asked to be effective May 1st.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So we need to update some forms.
Okay.
But we aren't gonna, we aren't gonna be voting on it tonight, because we have to make these changes, correct?
Right. Yes, Susan?
Well, with all the discussions we've had, planning board meeting you, many more to go over these numbers. And it's kinda left in the air whether you're gonna do sort of a cost analysis of how much closer this comes to paying for the salary. And for that matter, a salary analysis for what is paid to the current building inspector is to, if it's in line with what you have to pay in general. So have you done that?
Nope.
Well, it's still.
It's not gonna even come close.
It's not even gonna come close, no.
We'd have to do a lot more business.
Yes.
In getting building done in this town.
Yep.
To come close.
That's right.
Well, the other half of that is code enforcement.
We, no.
Is it supposed to be paid by a salary that the taxpayers have to bear the burden of? Or is it also that when people are in noncompliance, that there's any revenue from fines and fees incurred for having to follow a noncompliance improvement?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Also, I would add, has anybody looked at the impact of raising the fees on development activity, on maintenance and repair activity? There's, there's a point of diminishing return here.
Yeah.
When somebody says, "We're gonna raise fees in order to get more money," that assumes that activity will at least stay the same.
Yeah.
If we raise fees, make it more onerous for people to make these types of improvements and changes, then we don't make more money.
Right.
We wind up with a town where it's just more difficult to fix things.
Right, no, we, we did talk about that, and, and, and your point is well taken. It was like raising fees at the transfer station. If you raise them too much, people will dump their trash on the side of the road, and it's kind of a hard thing to quantify. You know, you hope that people would still do what needs to be done, but it's impossible to quantify.
Well, but in situations like this, I mean, I guess, you know, my perspective would be to move incrementally. Instead of one big jump, you begin to take things in steps over a period of a year or two years, so that you can assess the impact of, of what you're doing, a little at a time.
Okay.
So you want to make one big move, you're rolling the dice.
Understood, yep. Now, that's, that's an excellent point.
We didn't, we didn't raise them that.
No, some of them are not that, not that different, but.
Let's see, let's see how many permits were issued last month.
I think the impetus was when we compared them to other towns.
Yeah, definitely.
Ten permits were issued last month, so that's not gonna bring in, that's not a huge revenue generator at all.
Right, yeah, and Lee is right, we did look at other towns, you know. Your point is well taken, that, you know, people look at a big jump and kind of do a double take, and doing it incrementally might be a little bit easier to take. But this had been put off for so long that we were way beyond the point when they should have been reviewed, so.
What about how compliance been? I mean, I can't imagine 10 permits in a month, if somebody's not applying for a permit, I would think, I mean, that seems, you know, that's, that's a low number for.
It is a low number.
On the side of the bachelor.
Yeah.
And, and just from my perspective, a lot of things I see, and even I'm involved in, there's a lot of repair work needed around 10.
Yep, I'm sure you're right. I'm very sure you're right.
I don't know that we wanna thwart that activity.
Right. Any other comments? Yes, Alan?
I have a lot of them, but I'm gonna just stick to one or two.
Okay.
I would hope that there would be a little more consideration into what you're about to do, if you're gonna vote on this tonight.
We're not gonna vote on it tonight.
Okay, that was fun. Back to, back to.
Yeah, no, we obviously need to discuss a few things.
As far as raising fees to cover the cost of building inspector, I don't think that you really can do that, because you've put the cost so high. You will start to have a lot of noncompliance by homeowners, by contractors, and you're in a process of defeating the purpose. I feel it is a responsibility of the town to participate, to, because there is a liability on the town as well, to make sure things are done correctly. I, I think there needs to be a little more thought put into this, and I don't want, really wanna get into the other part of this, but it all comes down to the building inspector in general, and what his, what he's being asked to do.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. We will take all those comments into consideration when we discuss this again. Anything else before I close the public hearing? In that case, a public hearing on building fees is closed, and we will revisit this issue as a board in the near future. Okay, approval of minutes. We have minutes from Monday, April 1st.
Um, yes. Another public comment, it was line 16 through 19. It was kind of awkward, I really didn't know how to fix it.
Wait a second, let me back up for a second.
Yeah.
I thought we were gonna vote on these tonight.
The building fees?
When do you plan on revisiting?
We need, we have an open question that we need to fix before we can vote on them.
We have a change of language, we have to.
Which part?
Down at the bottom, the fine, the point that Eli raised about the fine for starting work without a permit. We need to go back and look at the.
Is it a fine or?
Sort of a fee.
Yeah.
Can we put it on our Thursday work session?
We, it's already too full. We got a lot going on on that Thursday.
True.
So I, I think we need to go back and revisit that.
Because this is going, if we don't vote on this today, that means June.
June, mm-hmm. Given that we waited till 2007, I think another month is not gonna kill us. I would rather get it right than, than rush it.
It would be nice to do it once.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so your comment about the minutes. Okay, yeah, it, it is kind of awkward, it doesn't really sum up what was said, so I'm not sure how to fix it.
Tell me your suggestion, and I'll tell you my suggestion.
Okay, it's the public comment.
Yeah, Susan Cloud asks.
Right here.
Susan might be able to maybe clarify. Susan Cloud asked to speak with the Board of Selectmen to clarify comments made at the Selectmen's March 4th meeting about the Ashland Heritage Commission and sponsoring an event. Then it, then it said the Heritage Commission previously had a fundraiser as such, no funds were collected for the Heritage Commission Fund.
That's, it's very awkward.
Yeah. It was an independent fundraiser, it was not sponsored by the Heritage Commission, no funds were handled by the, by the commission or the Town of Ashland. Do you have any thoughts?
I, I fixed that sentence to say, after "and sponsoring an event," I fixed it to say, "The Heritage Commission previously," and then take out, "had a fundraiser as such." Take that all out.
Yeah.
And put, "The Heritage Commission previously had a fundraiser and no."
No, we didn't have a fundraiser.
No, wait a minute.
Can I just?
"Commission previously," oh, "no funds were collected for the Heritage Commission Fund, and proceeds went to both Ashland and Holton Elementary Schools."
Susan, since you're here.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Since you're here, Susan, what would you like the minister to reflect?
Well, I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah.
This is number one, the Heritage Commission was, was granted the authority by the Board of Selectmen on November 16th.
At an event.
2015.
Now, we can.
To be able to receive donations and funds without further approval from the Board of Selectmen. Because those premise on having a 4th of July meeting, and you didn't wanna deal with all the money.
Right, right.
So number two, the event that has been in question was an event that the Heritage Commission voted to have a celebration of an historical event, and as allowed to be an umbrella or a sponsor or a fundraiser for another entity to be able to raise funds. The entities that were raising the funds were the two elementary schools, where there are programs.
Right, right.
And a fiscal agent, a third party handled all the funds. So any money that came in was not accepted in the name of the Town Bachelor, was not accepted by the Heritage Commission, and we had nothing to do with the money. We sponsored an event in which we offered a, a place for another entity to be able to raise funds.
Okay.
Well, what if we then said, "The Heritage Commission held an historical event, and no funds were collected for the Heritage Commission or Fund or the town, and proceeds went to both Ashland and Holton Elementary Schools."
Technically, it's just the Heritage Fund, it's not the Heritage Commission.
Okay, the Heritage Fund, yeah, okay.
Did you get that, Charlie?
Yes.
Some of it, yeah.
Okay.
I got it, wanted to write it out.
Sure.
All right, we will fix it.
Then on page 2, line 29, okay, Memorial Park has a trust fund with the Ashland trustees, the trust fund. These funds are used to make, for maintenance of the park, not were.
Yes, and above that, on line 27, Susan, "provide dead members in attendance."
Yes, Susan provided.
Dead.
Yeah, not provide.
Members in attendance.
A general role and responsibility.
A general responsibility.
The general role and responsibility.
Yeah, the general, right.
Of the park trustees, and then, and then 29, you're saying it should say, "where the funds are used," not where.
No, are. The funds are used for maintenance of the park, not where.
Period F, the trust funds. These funds are used for maintenance of the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
At the park.
Yeah. Anything else?
Nope.
Lee, Casey, Eli?
Same page, line 43, where it starts with consultant.
Yeah.
Consultant will make further alterations, not alternations, before final design.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And then on 46, upcoming summer camp, sign-ups, not signs.
Yep.
Sign-ups.
Good catch.
And that's all I have.
All right, Casey, Eli, anything else?
No.
All right, motion to approve the minutes of Monday, April 1st, as amended.
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Casey, guess, pick up louder.
Quickly, quickly.
Yep, yep.
Get in there.
I saw his mouth moving, I just knew his voice. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes from Thursday, April 4th.
I didn't see anything.
I didn't either.
No, I didn't either. All right, a motion to approve the minutes of Thursday, April 4th, as written.
Casey, here's your change.
I can't do it.
Oh.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Oh, too funny.
And no vote?
That's funny.
Great, thank you.
God.
Okay, new business. The community garden, Susan has brought our attention to, and thankfully so. We have a lovely piece of property, and, for which we spent lots and lots of money to create a very lovely community garden.
Yeah.
Heel has become defunct, and so there's no funding in the budget anymore for it. But what do we do with that property? I, for one, do not wanna see it go away. And I would like to find out if there's some other entity, or some group of gardeners that would like to take it over. I mean, we have spent money on a fence, we've spent money on equipment, we have lovely garden beds, you know, a lot of heart and soul went into that. I did speak to a couple of other members of the community garden group, and they too are interested in wanting to see something happen. So I would suggest that we table this and, and find some kind of a study group to come up with some alternative plan for that garden, especially right now, given that we're coming up on gardening season. I don't know what group might wanna take it over, you know, I don't have the time anymore, the funding isn't there, but it could be easily sustainable if you have some interested people. I don't know if the garden club would want it, I don't know. Anyway, we should explore possibilities, including getting those, those of us who'd been involved in it originally together. So that, that's my thought. Susan, I would welcome your comments at this point, because clearly you were very much involved with it.
Well, the farm was kind of felt like renegade gardeners last year.
I know.
Had no direction, no money, no.
Right.
Or was it really supposed to be there or not?
Right, and, and it's, it's a shame, you know, it, the ball kind of got dropped. But again, we put an awful lot into that, we got grants for it, and I, I would love to see somehow it be reorganized and revived, so.
And you bought equipment for it.
We bought equipment for it, you know, now that the water commissioners are no longer in existence, we don't know if we'd have to pay for water, you know, all that sort of thing. So there's a lot of questions to answer. So I will take it on myself to work with Susan and former members Liz Stevens, Miriam Almore, to see what we can do and come up with some suggestions.
And should we involve a school member too, or a school, maybe a school board member or something?
I don't think they're interested, yes, Susan.
They have been approached from the beginning.
Yeah, yeah.
And when you throw it with school property, even the principal would attend all our meetings.
Right.
No.
School time does not.
It's not gardening time.
And that coincides with, with growing season.
Right.
Oh, that's true.
Something in May, they disappear till September.
That's right.
And it just never seems to work, it's being part of an organized, part of their curriculum in any way.
Yeah.
That's true.
And, and for the summer camp, again, at some point, we, we built a raised bed for them, right there at the booster called them.
And nothing's been done with that either, so, no.
Right on the premises, I doubt that adding this property to their activities.
Would help.
No, I don't think it would. But we need to find out if somebody's interested in taking it over, again.
We can't, can't drag it out too much.
No, we can't, we can't.
Growing season is here.
Yeah.
Planning season is starting.
Plus, it needs to be maintained, it doesn't take long, and Susan, what, one season, and the bittersweet was something to make its comeback along the, the edges, so it.
The weather.
Right, so, okay, I will get in touch with people. David wants you a part of that too, because clearly you were very much involved. All right.
Thank you, Fran.
You're welcome. NHDES designation of authorities for CW SRF loan had worked, subject receiving. Charlie?
That's for me.
I know.
That's just a vote of the board to authorize, I guess you could say, the town manager position to sign off on this SRF loan.
Yeah.
Previously, this was approved for the Water and Sewer Commissioner. Since we don't have that anymore, they've requested that we have an updated authorization.
No, it should be you.
Yes.
I think by consensus, obviously, you would be the ones, so, okay.
But I need a vote.
You need a vote, all right. A motion to approve Charlie Smith as the new signator, as authority for signatures for the SRF loan?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Town manager job description. So we have a draft that we've worked on, and once it's, it's approved, we will put it on the web, but I think it's, it's now out there. And I know there's a little concern about one line that we, we designated as land use. Please understand that land use was not, it was not authority over the planning and zoning board, it was about enforcement only. So if we need to change that.
But what would we change it to?
Well, you could say, "land use enforcement," but then you have building inspector code enforcement. But land use enforcement is something that the, the board really does.
Charlie, the town manager, in my way of thinking.
Yeah.
Already acts not, in one use of the term, liaison between the land use boards and the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
True.
He's going to be feeling all of the requests when they come in about.
Town office.
Into the town office. The building inspector, well, the code enforcement officer, just that side of it, only can act after.
After our.
After our approval.
Right, right.
So as far as, he does not exercise, except for bringing the issues to the Board of Selectmen.
So would you strike that?
I would, I would strike that.
Okay, I'm happier striking it, because originally, my question from that other one we used, it said, "planning and zoning," and I knew that wasn't right.
Right.
So I think we sort of summarized it to kind of incorporate what we're talking about. But it does look like it's supervision, and clearly it's not. In the paragraph right below it, it goes on to say, "the town manager acts as a liaison to the planning and zoning board."
I would strike that sentence. Well, 'cause he's not really a liaison.
Well, it depends on how you define.
It doesn't mean he attends meetings, but.
He acts as the go-between, which is a liaison.
It is a liaison, it's not an official position, like we have liaisons to the committees.
Right.
But he is a liaison in terms of bringing things, you know, to our attention and having us vote on it. So let's strike land use out of the supervision exercised.
I don't think you can.
Why?
Well, surely you probably can, but the town manager has overall, is the supervisor over all departments.
Yeah.
So if you're striking it, you're saying, "the town manager doesn't have supervision over the land use assistant," now it's. That's two separate things.
Two separate things.
That's two separate things, yeah.
One, land use is not a department.
No, no, it's not.
Okay? Sure. But that's my feeling.
It does say that you exercise supervision over all appointed staff and departments within the Town of Ashland.
That, I would agree with.
Yeah.
Is that when the land use assistant is in there.
Mm-hmm.
Charles.
It says indirect supervision, I mean, she's there at the behest of the planning and zoning board to do research, but, you know.
They're the ones that hired her.
Right, right.
But. But...
No, 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 no.
We hired her.
The board hired her.
The board hired her.
The board hired her.
But she works at the behest of...
Not as the position as stated in the RSA.
Right.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Makes a difference.
Yeah. Susan, I know.
Point of order.
Yes.
RSA six seventy-three, colon sixteen, impowers the planning board to hire...
Yes, we know that. We did not, you did not, we, we had to approve the position. We didn't hire her.
And she works in the town office where that Charlie has supervision of.
Right. We approved the position. You hired her.
But it says, wait, it says here he has supervision over office staff.
No, it says indirect supervision.
No, no, down.
Oh, oh, okay. No, they're not. So...
I still would, I still would want to strike that town manager acts as a liaison to the planning and zoning boards, I think that's problematic.
All right. Consensus?
Yeah.
All right. Take that out.
Okay.
Yep. All right.
Okay.
Anything else?
So, what did we do?
We took out land use from the supervision exercise.
Took out everything involving land use.
And, we, no.
No.
And then we took out that first sentence in the paragraph below it.
So, everything involving land use.
The town manager acts as a liaison to the planning and zoning boards.
We took that out.
Took that out.
And land use.
And land use is supervised.
Yes.
Exercise supervision.
As Eli pointed out, it's not a department. All right, anything else?
Was there anything that jumped out at me?
Okay. Um, well, I will make those changes and take off the draft watermark and send it out, and it can be posted on the web.
Okay.
All right?
Sound good?
You want to take the vote to adopt it?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Motion to adopt the job description for town manager as amended.
I'll make that.
Going, going?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the revised town manager job description, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Um, town manager...
Oh, I had one more that...
Okay.
I had a question actually.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you check these examples to make sure none of them contain land use if you remove it?
I don't remember seeing anything.
Because I, for one, didn't look at any of these, since it says are illustrative only, but you don't want to have something in there that's not...
You're right.
I don't see anything.
I don't see anything, no. But thank you for double checking. No, I appreciate that. Okay. You had something else, Charlie? You said you had something else?
Oh, yeah, under new business.
Under new business, okay.
Yeah. The end of the day, on Friday, we received a vendor permit application.
All right.
Yeah. And I would have put this off to May sixth, but the application request is for May fourth, so...
We need to do it.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, someone wants to open a, just have a taco stand. Are they going to sell...
I had a few questions, but of course, we don't have anybody to...
Is it actually a taco stand? Or is it to have, uh, serve food on a porch?
That's what it sounds like to me.
Yeah.
Food, they told me they was going to sell tacos.
Yeah, on the porch.
For an event?
Cinco de Mayo.
Yeah, I think it's Cinco de Mayo, yeah. Um, my question was how often, because it says...
It's one, it would be a one-time, one-day?
No, it, it says in the letter...
I think they'd have to apply every time they were going to do it again.
Um, at various times to sell food and generally conduct their business.
Yeah, I think it would have to be, uh...
This is a one-time only?
A one-time only.
To me, it would be, have to be a one-time...
Because they could, they could, yes.
They need to know that this isn't permission to have it on the way.
That if they want to have another event, they can ask again, but I don't think you want to just leave it a blanket, um...
No.
On occasion, because on occasion could become every week.
Yes, um...
Then we'd have to let them know.
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to let them know.
The other comment was, um, I don't believe it should be on the sidewalk.
No, it would have to be on, it would have to be on the porch.
It would have to be on their property.
Or it says on our porch or in front of our building.
Uh, with looking at, um...
The map.
The map.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's the sidewalk area, and then there is a section in front between the sidewalk and the building.
I see that, but it was the language in...
Yeah, the letter. It, it should be restricted to the, the property itself, not on a public sidewalk.
And, uh, I'm, is, there shouldn't be any seating, this should be just like a grab-and-go type thing, people can't have tables and sit down there and eat.
They want to have, I believe that...
They could have tables on their porch.
Wants to have tables on their porch, and that's where they're going to be serving from.
And I don't see any problem with that, it's their own property.
It's their liability.
It's their liability, yeah.
My caution would be if they are act, that the food is sold and picked up from their porch.
Yes, yes.
Well, this is the first one I've ever...
We've never had anything like this.
Does that have anything to do with, you know, kitchen inspection?
Well, that's what I was thinking too, do they need running water? Do they...
Apparently, from what I heard, is that they're bringing them in on...
Yes.
Bringing the food in on trays and the shafing dishes.
Okay.
So, you would have sterno.
So, it's kind of, it sounds like it's a quasi catered, but you're, but, but you're paying for it, I, I guess.
Yes, I would imagine that's what you're going to be doing.
Yeah.
Um, what, what it is in preparation for, who knows? But, to me, this is a one-time...
Definitely.
Um...
And that they're responsible for cleanup?
But it's on their property.
Well, but people take a taco out and drop a paper on the sidewalk, you know, they should make sure that they provide receptacles for trash.
So, there'd be a few, not restrictions, but, uh, bullet points that we say, this is for one-time only.
Yes, yes.
Um, make sure there's adequate trash receptacles.
On their property.
On their property, yeah.
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 And, and it cannot be on the sidewalk.
Right.
And while sterno is a minor fire hazard, uh, there should be some form of...
Fire extinguisher.
Fire extinguishers.
That's a good, good point.
Uh, required.
Mm-hmm.
So, how do we do the...
Well, we'll have to write a response, Charlie will have to write a response, saying that it's been approved under the following conditions.
Under comments.
Under, you know, with the following conditions.
Yeah.
Now, did Chief Randall...
Chief Randall's behind you, do you have any comments, chief?
I looked at it this weekend, Charlie had forwarded me an email.
Yeah, yeah.
I sent him back, I have no problem with it at all.
Okay.
It sounds like, and by looking at the little map, it's all beyond their property.
Yep.
It doesn't pose any problems for the police department.
Okay.
Um, from reading the thing, it looks like they asked for it to be on one day, not multiple days or anything like that.
Well, the letter, the letter was a little bit vague, but I think they intended it for only one day, but we need to make sure that that's all it's approved for.
So, when I looked at the permit, the permit looked like it was just for one particular day.
Yeah, it only had one day, yeah.
Yep. Okay.
I, as the chief of police, I have no problems with this.
All right, thank you.
I don't think it's going to bring a, a treasure trove of people to the town of Ashland and create traffic.
No. And, and, no, anything that brings a celebration to downtown Ashland, I'm sort of in favor of anyway, so, um...
A large Hispanic group.
I love tacos. All right, motion to approve the permit application with conditions.
Sure move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, Charlie, if you could write them a letter? Anything else under new business?
No.
All right, town manager updates.
Okay.
Speaking of town manager, you need to change your email address, it still says town admin.
Oh, that's right, it does.
I don't know if I can do that.
Yeah, you can, you can do it.
Veronica, do it.
We'll look into that.
Yeah, I mean, you should have both, you know, as active, and, because people are going to still write to town admin, but you should be called what you're, what you are.
Some people still send it to Paul.
I know. All right, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
So, the, uh, library department, uh, the library took in, or, sorry, they borrowed fifty-four items from New Hampshire libraries, but lent, also lent out ninety-six items to other, uh, New Hampshire libraries.
Wow.
Um, yeah, yeah, that's pretty high.
Hmm.
Um, the library added twenty-one books for adults, seventeen books for children, six audio books and ten DVDs in March. Uh, a lot of things coming up at the library. They, they have knit in every Thursday from six to seven. Easter storytime will be April eighteenth at three P.M. Uh, during next week's school vacation week, the library is going to show family movie Peter Rabbit on Tuesday, April twenty-third at three P.M. Teen night will be held on Friday, April twenty-sixth from six to eight-thirty. Book group will be held on Monday, April twenty-ninth at seven P.M. Uh, the library is going to show the film On the Basis of Sex, based on the life of Ruth Bader Ginsburg, R.B.G.
Yes.
Um, on Tuesday, April thirtieth at six P.M. And beginning on May fourth, the library will offer in season, sensory play time. Every Friday, sensory play is an activity that stimulates children's senses. Stimulating the senses helps children develop thinking, language, social, emotional, physical skills, and is linked to supportive early childhood development.
We have a great library.
Wow.
And a great library staff.
That is odd.
Editorial comments.
I might come in here and comment on the interlibrary loan.
Mm-hmm.
Now that they have access to the upstairs, it's amazing how many of those books are requested, most of them are from...
Oh, interesting.
Wow.
The late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds.
Fascinating.
Um, some of them are first editions, so they're, um...
Cool.
And now they can ax, you know, they can access them at will. So, there's quite a bit of interest in those.
What a treasure we have in that library, really.
Yeah.
I think it's, you know...
It is.
Not appreciated enough, but anyway, that's just my opinion. Okay.
And, uh, I know everyone loves Sarah's comments.
Yep.
So, books break the shackles of time, proof that humans can work magic. Carl, say again.
Yep.
You know who that is, right?
No, I don't.
You don't know who that is? Oh, okay.
Oh, she's...
We'll tell you later.
Before my time?
No, he's not before your time. Well, maybe a little, but, okay, never mind.
Poor Charlie.
We just came in.
I know, I know.
He was a finance major.
No, that's true, he was, not Carl Sagan.
No, no, Carl Sagan, you know, the cosmos.
Yeah. Anyway, scientist, go ahead.
No, sorry.
That's all right.
Okay, Parks and Rec, uh, Ann's still getting food from the food bank for the after-school program. Uh, she still gets it set at reduced price. Uh, the sites at the campground are filled. Uh, they're able to, the sale of camper on site one has been completed. Uh, she's been working with the electric department and an electrician to plan some electrical upgrades at the campground. She's hoping it gets done before snow clears out. DPW cut down some trees in the parking lot and at the beach, Craig's going to put in some pack and stone, she says that, I don't know.
Was it ledge pack?
Ledge pack.
Um, reclaimed asphalt.
Yeah, they're trying to level the area.
Mm-hmm, oh, good.
Um, summer camp, uh, signups on April ninth, well, it's already passed, but you can still sign up for it. Uh, this past, uh, weekend, nope, the Easter egg hunt, she put April twenty-first, but I think that was this past weekend. Was the Easter egg hunt gone? Yeah, there's, there's, she had the twenty-first weekend, but that was, I think, uh, this past weekend, they had forty-two kids.
Oh.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's great.
Uh, after-school program's still doing good, she averages about twenty per day.
Wonderful.
Uh, kids night out in February, had twenty-two kids. Um, one in... Unfortunately, food for all is, uh, coming to an end.
Okay.
Um, they're just not getting enough people to show up.
Yeah, okay.
I did have to make a comment on that, I did read that in the paper, and, um, they did have two refrigerators and one big chest freezer downstairs.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, if Ann hasn't done it already, make sure they're unplugged and they're cleaned out, because...
They're empty.
In, in the past, that wasn't the case, was it, Susan?
Um, nothing, nothing.
Quite like...
Yeah.
Food left in a unplugged refrigerator freezer.
I don't want to think about it, okay.
But, but they, they also suck up a lot of energy.
They do, they do.
And if they aren't going to be using them, um, they need to be unplugged, and maybe they'll have to be, um, yeah.
That's too bad, that's a good program in its time.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, fire department responded to a total of thirty-two calls last month, seventeen were medical emergencies, five fire rescue, uh, calls, eight motor vehicle accidents, and two service calls. Uh, regular department training, uh, took place in March, which included, uh, SOG for ice rescue, uh, monthly trunk, uh, truck checks, and an ice rescue drill exercise on Squam Lake. EMS training involved a review of the management of patients with hypothermia. Uh, the department continues to, uh, work on the installation of backup cameras on engine one, ladder one, ambulance one, forestry one, and utility one. Uh, they're just looking to, hoping to reduce the risk involved in backing the vehicles up in the station. Uh, the undercarriage on ladder truck, uh, is starting to go. Uh, Chief Heath, uh, reached out to a company about getting an estimate for the removal of the rust on the undercarriage, um, so he's hoping to resale it with an epoxy that, um, you know, basically would put the, um, life of the vehicle. Uh, he's hoping to get that done sometime in May. One of the overhead heaters on the apparatus floor failed and was repaired by XL mechanical. Uh, the town received reimbursement for the Homeland Security Grant, this was, uh, sometime last year, if you remember the police arrest and stuff. Uh, hazard mitigation plan was completed, we're waiting for final approval from FEMA.[1505.91] We're waiting for final approval from FEMA. The Life Safety Code inspections, those continue for both Assembly and rental occupancies. The police department dispatched, received two-hundred-and-eighty-one calls, seventy-six incidents, nine arrests, one warrant, two accidents, twenty-two citations, six parking tickets were issued. The department, we've had some turnover into the department. Officer Waterbury left and was replaced by Elizabeth Scrafford. She was sworn in in March. Ms. Scrafford has nineteen years of law enforcement experience, has certifications as a firearms instructor, taser instructor, and field training officer. Chief Randall knows she's gonna be a good benefit to the department.
It'd be nice if you bring her to a meeting so we could all get to meet her sometime.
Sometimes officers are so
Man.
All right. All right.
I'll ask her.
All right.
I'll ask her.
All right. It would be nice to meet her, or I could go to the department to find out when she's there, okay?
Yep. Sergeant Gray attended training at the New Hampshire Police Standards and training on landlord-tenant law in order to better equip the department with dealing with landlord and tenants' conflicts.
I caught my eye when I read that.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Well, because as we all know, they're civil matters. It doesn't involve the police department, whatever he wants to get the police department involved in.
I know.
And so we have to give them advice to let them know
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it's a civil issue, you know.
And they want the health officer involved.
I was just gonna say that, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Let's see, April twenty, this is, at Market Calendars, April twenty-seventh, twenty-nineteen, between the hours of ten AM to two PM. National Police Department will be participating in the DEA Drug Takeback Initiative. You can drop off unused or unwanted drugs at the police department located at Twenty-Highland Street. I know Tony gets a lot with that. So remember, there's no parking on Ashland, any street in Ashland from November first through May first, from one AM to five AM. We still got a couple more weeks with that. Registered dogs at the Town Hall are online by May first. And always lock your cars.
Okay.
Because people do break in.
Yep.
Electric department. We experienced a service interruption on Smith Hill around four-thirty. It was probably because of fallen trees. Electric department, they had power restored in about an hour. They're starting to tree trim. It started on, let's see, Sandboard Road. They hope to get that completed in April or May. Tree trimming also on Circuit Number One, which includes Thompson Street, Most of River Street, Leavitt Hill Road, Route Three to Holderness Town Line, Albrook Road, Hicks Hill Road, and all the side streets off those roads will begin in late April and early May. The department installed a new automatic meter reading. This, they got about two-hundred to install, should be completed by the end of May.
Well, that's just the first two-hundred.
First two-hundred. He wants to do up to, like, I think, fifteen-hundred, maybe.
Something like that.
Yeah. They're looking to get better accuracy on the readings.
Well, it's a lot faster, too, and cost-effective.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Some turnover at the electric department as well. Mark Marnehan left to go to Eversource, and Dale Weeks was away for, he's a, he's part of the Army, National Guard. Building inspector, as mentioned earlier, took in ten, issued, I should say, ten permits, collected seven-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. Water and sewer, had some maintenance repairs, with meter repairs, snow removal, shovel off the hydrants, truck maintenance, service blower number one at the wastewater plant, sewer pump station maintenance, lab equipment maintenance, some plant activities where they completed all permits required for the lab tests, monthly bacteria, pH, and alkalinity tests from the water system. Discharged fluent at wastewater park the week of March twenty-fourth, toxicity sample and testing at the wastewater plant. I'll add that on Wednesday, we're going to award the bid for the septic receiving system. So we're moving along with that.
That's good.
I have one more to add. We've been hearing, everything that we love to hear in town, these rumors. Yep. Our office has heard that we could use, now that we went to Town Manager, former government, that we can use the enterprise funds to lower the taxes. That is not the case. RSA Thirty-eight and One-Forty-nine dash I, you can't commangle the funds. You know, they're supposed to be kept separate into state funds.
They're still enterprise funds, and the rate they're still funding the operations.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Project list.
Projects, our list.
Our list.
Tap grant. This has been on hold, so I wrote an email today to NHDOT and sort of said, where are we at with this? And you've had it, they've had the preliminary designs since December. I guess they're getting ready to release a comment to the engineer. In the meantime, we're gonna start working on the easements. KV Partners is gonna give me a list of all the easements that need to be done on that strip
Yep.
On Route Three, and we'll start sending out letters to property owners to make them aware.
Okay.
Yeah. Thompson Street project, we have to decide whether or not we want to reapply for the State Revolving Fund. That starts at the end of April and goes to about mid-May. I think we're gonna try to talk about this at Thursday's meeting with Craig. No updates on town personnel policy. I do have an update on the feasibility grant at the Ashland Properties. I met with the Warren Street Architects, who we awarded the grant to. Basically, to get a general, give them a general idea of what our expectations are, what we'd like to see. They're gonna continue to write up a scope of work. We might review the project at the beginning of May.
Okay.
They wanna tour it, see what it looks like, see what they're looking at further. But we've gotta get the contract in place with them before we do that.
Okay.
The Elche Williams Architect submitted a plan. The plan that they submitted, they wanted to move forward with a plan that removed the Ashland Police Department out of our office. So, okay, great, but where would they go? So with the maintenance work that's been gone at the utility building on the water side, we said, can we put PD there because we also have the other building next to the electric department? So they're gonna review this later on this week, when I'm actually over there on Thursday, Norman's gonna come by and review to see if that's positive. No updates on the GIS project, the Whipple House matter with the lease. We sent them a memo, requested a decision by the end of April. Building permit fees, we, obviously, we had the meeting tonight. No grant opportunities as of yet. Solar energy, Selectman Sharps and Vice Chairman DeWolfe and myself, we met with a firm about installation of solar panels on Town Old Land. I thought it went good.
Yeah, I have a couple paragraphs about it.
Did you want Selectman item or?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And that's all I got.
Okay.
Very good.
All right, utility partners contract with Ashland Water and Sewer?
Case people don't know, I guess you could say, service provided at the Ashland Water and Sewer has been through utility partners. Another concern, people are always under the assumption that many in that department work for the town. Only the clerk technically is underneath the town. I reviewed this contract, and long story short, I'm gonna ask the board for a vote for us to terminate this agreement. Couple reasons why. I think we have staff that can handle a lot of the services that they provide. I think Rusty has been doing the job since nineteen eighty-eight. He's very qualified to do the job, so we could save some money by leaving this, right? A significant amount of money. Nothing against the company, but I think it's time that we bring this back. This was an advisement from the Water and Sewer Commissioners that they were looking into before, that they were considering. Like I said, I'm here to sort of see it through. Other than that, I think, again, we'd save a lot from doing this, and with that savings, I think that would give us flexibility to take the department in other areas that we might want to.
Comments, questions?
I sat in on the meeting and what got my attention is, this company's been sold multiple times, it's just gone through another transition. The spokesperson couldn't answer some of the questions because he was, he didn't know the answers. So I always find it problematic when companies turn over. Gosh, what was it, like, five times? No.
It's been through
Yes.
Yeah.
Several iterations.
Okay. And it just, I, it didn't make me feel confident that they could provide the services that we already have. People with boots on the ground that are providing for it, yeah.
So, you know, my question is, I understand all these issues. My question is, what are we losing? And I direct that to you, Eli, as a former commissioner. You know, I just wanna make sure that we are, we're, getting rid of them's one thing, but making sure we're not cutting ourselves off at the knees by giving up some safety net.
No.
I just wanna make sure that we're covered in terms of services.
From, I, I do believe that Mr. Cross and the gentlemen that work down there are perfectly capable of providing ninety percent of the services. What utility partners or a contract operations company have provided in the past is a backup. I believe that Mr. Cross has built up a network of people that would come to the aid if we needed that. So at this point in time, as has been stated, that the commissioners were looking at an alternative
Yep.
That with Mr. Smith's supervision, management supervision, I believe that we could very easily have Rusty and his staff complete everything.
Okay. Good, I needed that assurance.
Me, too.
Mm-hmm. And I appreciate that.
And Rusty's.
Yeah.
Who I asked to attend.
Rusty, would you like to make any comments?
No, if you're comfortable to make that decision, I think we can move forward.
Okay.
Very little, little interruption.
Good.
All right. In that case, a motion to Discontinue the contract. I think they need some kind of notice, like ninety days, is that right?
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty.
Whatever their
Whatever their termination is. Yeah, terminate the contract, that's what I was looking for.
You were looking to terminate the contract.
Okay. So a motion to move forward with the termination of the contract.
We'll make that motion.
I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And Charlie, I recommend you do that as soon as possible, because now this will become public knowledge.
Yes. And see if maybe they
They should not be blindsided.
And maybe they will decide to part sooner
It's possible.
Instead of before, or twenty days. Make the transition quicker.
Okay.
Yep.
The only other thing was, they may come up with, well, here's a buyout.
Mm-hmm. Well, we'll cross that bridge and come to it. Okay. Great.
That's all I have.
That's it? Okay. Select board items. Lee, you wanted to talk about solar energy a little bit?
Well, I have a couple of reports.
Okay, all right.
They're very lengthy. No, they're not. The first one is a report from our Squam Lakes Subcommittee Watershed. Susan and, Susan McLeod and Margine Badger and myself are on it. They represent the planning board, and I'm representing the Select Board now. And we had a meeting a couple weeks ago, and Susan and I attended it. For those who didn't hear my previous report, we talked, at the first report, we talked about the future build-out of our town and the impact on Squam River and our area around Little Squam. And the results are basically that it would be between forty to fifty years before we would even begin to see a hundred percent build-out, and that's of all the land in town, not just around the lake. That's of all the town. And that's, you know, it could be possible, but it's not definite because in this last decade, both new building and the town population have both decreased in the town. However, our water quality and the health of the lake should always be important to us. So the purpose of this committee is to develop a new lake watershed plan, which includes more testing in areas of both lakes, but what they have identified to be most important are the deepest parts of each lake. And on the Big Lake, it's Rocky Well Deep Haven, right in front of that. And the deepest part of Little Squam, which is going to be our, the main interest of area, is about two-hundred-and-fifty feet directly in front of the covered bridge, in the kitty corner to the public beach, my beach, and Stokes, right there in the middle. That's the deepest part, and that will be our area of concentration on Little Squam. The only other part that's going to be included in this test is in the Kimball Marine area, but that's actually Holderness, and that's where they had a very bad algae problem several years ago, and it took them a couple years to clear that out.
Algae and milkweed.
But it is parts of Little Squam.
And they had algae.
But it is a part of Little Squam.
Yeah, they had algae.
The deepest part of our lake and on Big Squam, what they're looking at is the phosphorus and chlorophyll levels. The phosphorus levels actually indicate the algae and invasive species of plants. The chlorophyll levels refer to any type of plant life, not necessarily that's dangerous. So that's what we're gonna be looking at. Because of the building growth around the lake in Ashland from nineteen eighty to twenty-ten went to seventy-five percent increase, there was no marked increased trend in the phosphorus or the algae, which is really good. And since then, with the building being, and the population being decreased, we're not going to be looking at any significant changes, hopefully. But Susan and I were greatly concerned and asked questions about testing along Squam River, because I think, as a lot of us know, there are some invasive species, especially down by where the gazebo is. So we've asked them if they could please try to include our part, the Squam River part in Ashland and do some more testing there so that we could have some more results. We'd be able to do some work on that, and I think that's mainly what we're looking at. You can find all this information on the SLA Squam Lakes Association website. They have all the build-out information and our testing. So at our next meeting, we're hoping that maybe we can hear something about Squam River and what we can do about it.
Okay.
My only other, my other report is about our solar meeting that we had last week. Myself is the board elected point person, and Kathleen DeWolfe is our board assistant. And Charlie Smith met with John Guerin. He's the Director of Business Development of Tangent Energy Solutions, which is actually based in Pennsylvania, we found out. It's another company that we met with to obtain information so the board, planning board, et cetera, can make informed decisions before any possible warrant article can come up next year, next March, which is gonna have to happen. We just can't bring everything in, and that metering and all that information. I asked him specifically why he contacted Ashland out of all the towns and cities in the state, because we were the first ones, and he said, actually, they were on their way to Mount Cranmore and Conway to do a study there.
On our way.
And they're on ninety-three, and he looked at the map and said, this town is in the middle of the state, so let's go there first.
That's what he said. It's a new phrase.
That was the decision.
It's on our way.
On the way. But he did have a very interesting, yeah, he brought up a mapping system right on his computer on the GSI, and he showed us actual areas up close of where we can put
Put them and how many.
And how many, and we have plenty of land, he said, to do large arrays. The only concern, which I thought was interesting, a lot of towns use their covered landfill sites to put these on, and he was, he was kind of against that because we don't know of hazardous material underneath it, or if it would involve any type of excavation. So he kind of like, was not, was a little leery about that, and I think he kind of turned us off on that as well. But we're going to still be in touch with him. He's going to get us more information at no cost.
Wonderful.
So we're working on, we're working on, you know, this is like our fourth company presentation, so we're working, we're working along.
He was based out of Massachusetts himself, wasn't he?
Yeah, he was, but the main company, he wasn't
Well, that's very exciting. We really appreciate all the work you're doing on this. I think it's extremely important.
I think we're coming along, and it's kind of nice to have more input, too.
Yeah.
He said, we could put two-point-five megawatts of solar panels at the transfer station, one-point-two megawatts at the septic water and sewer.
Yeah, the lagoons.
The side of the lagoons, I think.
The lagoons.
The lagoon here.
Yeah, yes.
And three-point-three at the pump station.
Wow.
And that's a lot, and that's a lot, just so you know.
That's fabulous.
Good, doesn't mean we won't.
That's an issue.
Well, we'll figure it out.
Yeah. He knows, yeah. He's gonna be looking into that.
Okay. Any other select board items?
But as far as the country goes, we are number thirty-one, lagging behind in all the other states.
Yeah, I'm not surprised.
This is FYI, Charlie's gonna be on vacation next week, and Robin, one, you know, who's gonna sign the manifest, so we have to go in the office next week and sign the manifest.
Oh.
Oh, no, again.
Okay.
You're on vaca, three of us have to go in.
Three people, right.
Eli, me.
I keep going in because I
Yeah, I'll go in.
It was funny, you asked, she came, she goes, who's gonna sign?
And for everyone's information, I thought I was going nuts, but they took out a light switch in the main room when you go in. Have you noticed that? When you go in the back door, there's a light switch that I always use over by the assessor's desk, and it's gone, but I wasn't really sure, so I had to do this. So I called, I called in Officer Gray, and he assured me, no, there's no switch there, Lee.
It did not get stored.
It's covered up.
They moved it.
No, yes, because remember you wanted
They moved it.
I wanted a motion sensor light or something.
Well, they, you have the switch right when you go into the back door.
Instead of the
Okay, so, so it's handy when you open the door.
Yes.
But who knew?
Well, that's great. I'm glad that got taken care of. Wonderful. All right, any other select board items? We don't have a non-public, a motion to adjourn?
Are we having a meeting on Thursday?
We're having a meeting on Thursday at nine o'clock.
Yes?
Oh, yes, I do have something.
We don't on a work session usually. No.
Our appointments will be the first meeting of May.
Oh, first meeting of May, yes, the appointments, yes, okay.
On the agenda.
Yeah. Is there something you're dying to say, Susan? We don't usually have public comments in a work session, but the floor is yours. Hmm?
No, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to publicly thank some kids. Last Sunday
Oh, this is not a discussion.
I was out cleaning the front garden at Town Hall.
Yep.
And the kids from across the street came and asked if they could help.
Oh, nice.
So Lucius and Cody and Ethan and Ally were just wonderful. They were cooperative, they were careful with what they were doing.
Oh, that's great.
And it was just such a treat that they were, they wanted to help with the garden.
That's fabulous.
And that's what we And that's what we need is more compliments like that.
Absolutely, thank you. I'm very glad you said that.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.